We have seven o'clock and a solid meeting of the Board of Alderman's Order. Roll call please, Don.
Mayor, I mean, Alderman Gorman?
Yes.
Alderman Lee?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yes.
Ald- Alderman Volbren?
Yes.
Alderman Moore?
Yes.
All right, we do have a forum to see if an official business can take place. Do you please join me in the flag allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, fact that our prosecutor is here with us tonight. I'd like to rearrange the agenda a little bit and offer her an opportunity to go first so she can get back on the road.
Well, thank you. I see some familiar faces and some new faces. I am April Wilson, the city prosecutor. I've been with the city now eight years, if possible, going on my ninth. We had some changes this year with court, which is part of the reason why Mayor and I have been speaking. We went to an e-file system, which is what Missouri is trending towards. All of the counties by 2015 will be e-file, which essentially is a paperless system. Although the prosecution side of it, I'm still able to file the paper tickets that the city police department send to me. That eventually will go by the wayside. They have not given a projected date for that. I anticipate that there will be some expense to that. I don't know, Chief, if you've had any, you heard anything on your side as to when it might be an e-file or paperless electronic, where we'll all have to be on an electronic system between the departments.
I'm dragging my feet as if it's not going to occur.
Me too, me too. The only concern I would bring with that is there has been much talk among the court and bank about moving court to Columbia because we cannot support the e-file system. We are fortunate enough to have Judge Michael Bradley, who is not supportive of that contention, who supports keeping court here locally so that when someone gets a city ticket in Centralia, they don't have to drive to Columbia to dispose of it. We would not have the resource, in my humble opinion, to go e-file. It's about a $30,000 upgrade. I will tell you, they are completely eliminating the current system, which is JIS, the Judicial Information System, that has been the system since I've been practicing law the last decade plus, maybe 15 or 20 years, is going to be completely obsolete. The new system will be more supportive of the e-file system and the case.net system in which people can go on and look at what's going on with their case, if the case has been filed. So, I don't know what changes that will bring for court. I will tell you, it is, I'm in a bit of a situation that I've not been in with this jurisdiction that it's somewhat uncertain as to what type of parameters they might put on us with the new information systems coming down the pike. What I will say is I would be very positive that Michael Bradley will not be in support of moving court from this jurisdiction. Although in my tenure and it'll be allowing me to continue to serve for the city, this is certainly not the first time that there has been some rumblings about trying to move court out of the city of Centralia. So, right now, I feel confident that won't happen. The judge is not supportive of it. But certainly, just a concern I wanted to express to the council, should there be updates to the system that need to be made and also considering whether or not we keep court here, just something to kind of be thinking about and looking forward to the future in regards to. Other than that, really, the system is working well. I think we're probably, I'm probably getting, we're keeping more tickets local, disposing of more tickets locally, than going to the state prosecutor's office, which I think is always positive. So, although I've seen some changes, we seem to be working, continuing to work well together is the best of my knowledge.
April?
Yes, sir.
Is this something that's happening across jurisdictions?
Yes. It is something that's happening across jurisdictions. Callaway County was the test pilot jurisdiction for e-file. And that happened actually back in, this is 2014, I want to say 2013, they started the e-file push. Some of the jurisdictions I practice in, which are much smaller counties, are not going to be required to go e-file until 2015, sometime in 2015. I think we're, the First Circuit's scheduled to go e-file in January, and they're already loaded up and ready to go. Of course, Kansas City and St. Louis were the first major jurisdictions to go online after Callaway. But yeah, it's a concern across the state. Where are the funds going to come from? How are these counties going to pay for this? Not everybody's a Boone or a Jackson or St. Louis County that can afford this. What our city's going to do? How is it going to eliminate clerk's positions? I mean, it is, among at least the legal system, we're very concerned about how it's going to affect people. It should increase their ability to get information, but I'm skeptic. But it is a problem across the board. Because you don't, you can't walk in and get a paper file anymore. So, it's very concerning to me that if I wanted to go back, you know, let's say a ticket was incorrectly entered and it was, you know, let's say you got points on your license and you lose your license and you're fighting DOR. There's no, when the judge has said, "Here, there's no record of that." It's just, we're kind of purely at the mercy of what's entered. There's no written docket that has existed for decades. So... Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is there any protections for people that want to hack in there and do malicious things?
Well...
I don't know.
You know, I think the system itself is a fairly secure system. I think it, JIS was always fairly secure against being hacked. I heard rumblings, it's been probably six months ago, that the casenet system was hacked, not that long ago. But, you know, casenet is not a secure information. It's really the public forum in which information is made available, not the official record. So, really, anything, you know, for years, JIS has existed and what transfers criminal convictions to Missouri State Highway Patrol. And it, it has been incredibly secure. So, I think that this was really modeled as far as security in the same fashion.
Well, I know there's a state law that says that the state can't force a cost law to the cities and counties. I also know that fighting that is not the cheapest thing in the world either.
You know, I, that's really interesting that you bring that up because these counties coming up, especially kind of like where I live, is, you know, there's almost more people in the city of Centralia than there are in the county. So, you're looking at the tax base, it's a real challenge. So, to come up with $30,000 unbudgeted dollars where you are not able to have court, which is not an option, you're facing real budgetary issues.
So, we kind of stop the legislation from doing that, you'd have to assume that would be a very good opportunity.
Well, no, and I will say Missouri was behind the times. We are one of the last states to go electronic. I think our bar was pretty strong in fighting against losing the paper record. The ability for citizens to walk in and get a copy of what's occurred in their case doesn't exist.
I love that it isn't necessarily legislature as it is beside a judge of what he decides he's going to do in that circuit. He or she decides what he's going to do in that circuit.
Yeah, not, not just the system update, but computer. You know, you have to have the actual computer that is compatible. And we had, of course, Teresa's not here tonight, but the very first court date that we were e-file was, is it August? Was it just in August? Gosh, seems like more time's passed then. Well, it was sometime in the summer and it was a complete disaster. The computer went offline. We couldn't make document entries. We had a standing room only. And hours and hours of court and couldn't do anything. And he said, "Give me a piece of paper. I'm going to start making document entries." And he just set the computer aside. It never did load. And I'm telling you, I was about as nervous as it comes that first time around. I just hoped they'd give us another chance. Because I thought, if he can't upload this laptop that they've sent with him to accommodate our location, we were going to be in trouble. Now, since then, not even a glitch. We've not had a problem. So, I've been encouraged by that. I'm going to say maybe June, because we've had two or three court dates now. June?
June and July, I believe, was the one.
It was, I think. So, I got a little nervous. They didn't want to come see you in June. A few months passed, see how it goes, so. But we've worked out a lot of the kinks. I think we're doing pretty good now. Positive, very positive. We'll stay in the city of Centralia, which I know has been a big, big thing ever since I've been here, so. And we did change court costs. Court costs went up $2. They imposed a sheriff's retirement fund that had been on appeal for a really long time. We lost that battle and had to impose the $2 fee, so our cost went up. I think that's all the changes that I can think of.
Do you want to have any other questions, April? I appreciate you coming in this month.
I appreciate you continuing to let me serve the city. I enjoy it.
Well, definitely have a good trip home.
Thank you. I will, unless there's an issue that you think I might be assistive on.
April, why don't you just tell where you were when you started doing this and where you are now?
You mean, in the city or?
Where you live and where you practice before and now.
Okay. Well, when I started at the city eight years ago, I was a full-time prosecuting attorney, assistant prosecuting attorney in Callaway. I served in Boone County. When my husband was accepted to medical school, I moved up to northeast Missouri, and that's where I've been the last five years.
You're currently the city administrator, I mean, city attorney for?
I am the city attorney. I did resign a few cities. I had a little too much on my plate. So, I am the city attorney and city prosecutor for the city of Cahoka, the city of Downing. I also work for Wyaconna Wayland. Just resigned the city of Lancaster and the city of Memphis, so, this year. This is kind of the year I had to pare back, so.
Well, I think, thank you for coming in.
Thank you for having me.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Have a good one.
I will. Thank you. I won't.
All right, consent to jury? Any questions from previous minutes or anything? I have a motion to second to accept the consent of general jury. All those in there say aye?
Aye.
Closed. Counsel payable over $1,250?
I have a motion to accept the counsel payable over $1,250 in the amount of $375,836.71.
I have a motion to second to accept the counsel payable over $1,250 in the amount of $375,836.71. All those in there say aye?
Aye.
Closed. All right, at this time, I'll open the floor for comments from citizens. If you have a comment to make, go ahead and stand and take the name and address for the record and speak away.
It's not, it's not working right now, so.
It actually, it picks up on these pretty well.
Feral cat, 915 mistake. The last meeting we had, when we talked about the feral cats, I kind of felt like all these people over here and then myself. So, I kind of went out and talked to some of my neighbors, and there's 24 signatures here. But I leave a copy for the minutes and then whoever wanted a copy. There's 24 signatures. That was just two days, maybe four hours. I have some family issues that I have to take care of, so I wasn't able to do more than that. But just kind of wanted you guys to know that it's not just me. You'll notice on there too, that two of the comments, that is not a petition. It's just signatures that we'd like the city council to uphold all of the ordinances that relate to feral cats. Two of them involve kids. Where one said, I think, where the cat had hissed at their child. And another one was that she's concerned because her very small child plays in the yard, that has cats in it. Most of the complaints are about poop. I think there's two on there about boat damage. But I just kind of felt like, over the last three weeks, that I feel like I'm doing all this talking and it's just me, when it's not really just me. There's, you know, more people than that. One of the things that was discussed last week was about things that you were talking about, looking at other cities and seeing what they do. These are just suggestions. A feral cat is a feral animal. It's wild. It still needs to be taken up and then somebody other than us handle the problem. I don't know how to say that other than say, you know, but being euthanized is in your city ordinances. Something that might, before that stage, might help is, there's a lot of cities that have a containment law that you must feed and contain your cat, dog, reptile, man, it doesn't matter. Part of the problem is that they're not being contained. You know, my dog is being contained, but the cats aren't. And I think it's only right that if you're going to own an animal, that you need to feed it on your own property and you need to be responsible for it on your own property. So, that's just an idea. I would not get rid of the ordinances that you have, but maybe add one. Just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
Somebody had the original copy of that.
I do.
Each one of you give us copies?
Uh-huh. And then one for the record?
Yeah.
Okay, any more comments from citizens? All right, here you go. I'll close comments from citizens. Presentation by Simon and Associates Architects for City Hall renovation.
I'm Jason Tetra. I'm with Simon Associates Architecture. Like you said, we put together the documents for the repairs to this building exterior. What we identified for this project was masonry restoration, so they're removing damaged bricks and tuck pointing, as you can see. And then, starting here in the next couple of weeks, we'll be doing repairs to the roof. The concern that...
It's a separate company doing the repairs.
Yes, two different contractors. Yeah, not a problem. The issue we've run into is that we're over budget. And the mason is recommending additional work to be done that wasn't identified as part of the bid. They're recommending caulking the windows. Most of the windows, the caulk along the head of the windows is completely gone. And then, on some of the jams, it's cracked and peeling away from the brick and the size of the jam. And in other places, it's just old and deteriorated caulk. It needs to be replaced. And then, probably the more pressing concern that they identified is they need additional replacement bricks to properly complete the job. We identified, I think, 30 or so when we put the documents out. And they're saying they need about 50 more, so there'd be a cost...
In addition to the third?
In addition to the third, yeah.
Fifty additional.
Fifty additional. They've put together costs for the rest of these additional scopes of work. Total's about $8,000 for both the caulking and the replacement bricks. I would say the replacement bricks is probably a higher priority. There's potential to have a city maintenance employee do some of the window caulking to save some costs there. But I would also recommend that get done as well, sooner rather than later. I do understand the budgets they concern, but I think price of it be done.
So, the $6,000 that was just for, they're to do caulking?
That's for them to caulk all the exterior windows and doors, which would involve cutting out the caulk that has remained and then re-caulking all the way around the doors and windows.
$2,000 for the brick?
$2,000 for the brick, yes.
Didn't have a chance to ask all the questions. The original budget for this was $50,000. What we put in the budget, I'm reading that right, $50,000?
That was for the masonry repairs and the roof?
That was the estimate that we came up with, I guess, about a year ago.
Yes, probably about a year ago, where we put some, we estimated what we thought would be the cost of what we identified.
Right. If we, if there are no cost overruns with the roof, which is $45,000, the whole cost with, if we accept all these, I mean, it's really, we really can't reject this. It'd be virtually impossible to reject the $2,000 for the bill.
I would say so, yeah.
It would, the caulking going, if we, like, we might, basically, around six, additional $6,000. So, we're over $82,000 for the project. How did, I mean, Lynn's not here, so we don't put all of him, I'll bet. No, but how did we miss so much?
It's hard to tell from the ground how deteriorated the bricks are themselves. Once they started cutting in to the mortar, primarily the second floor above the windows right there at the parapet, they, the bricks there are a lot softer and they're just damaged. There's been a lot of water infiltration in those areas. And so, it's more bricks than we estimated, basically.
The overall project, I mean, if you go back, the, I mean, the...
Yeah.
Original bids were higher than. We had a project in Fulton not long ago, and our city engineer sort of was shaking his head saying, "You don't want the engineers estimate to be the low bid." So, I mean, we've got some more stuff to do. How can we be better?
Yeah, we probably should have, I don't think we realized initially that there's a prevailing wage job, which drives up the overall cost of the project. And then, we probably should have overestimated so that you would have budgeted better. Would have been, what I could say about that.
Because there's still the ceiling, which would be, I mean, the...
Waterproof.
Where, while the weatherproofing, and that's at least $17,000. But $17,000 if we did this year, and Tom was suggesting that to remobilize means it's unlikely that the bid for next year would be 17, or probably closer to 19 percent.
It's getting it back at her yet. That makes sense.
Okay. All right. Okay, that's there. I don't, that was my question. I don't see, how, the lower level windows is the only one you would see would be?
I just...
I talked to Mark. He's not crazy about the idea of getting up there in a bucket truck.
Exactly. I didn't think it'd be viable to have a city employee doing the second floor windows based on the height. And maybe not even the lower ones because the head's pretty high on a lot of those, but...
And we'd want to use the product that he's recommending in.
Yeah, and they already have the experience and used it a lot. We could probably have him do, or talk with the mason about doing it for a time and material basis. So, some of the windows aren't as bad as other windows. So, I think he was planning to do all of them, just so that they're all done now and it's all good for the next however long. We wanted to save some money. We could just do the ones that really need it, as opposed to all of them.
So, you said you talked to Mark about...
Yeah.
The guy doing this?
Getting a bucket truck back there and up in the air and everything, I don't, we could probably get there. We could probably get it there, but then we've got our electric crew doing essentially masonry work. I'm guessing we shave a couple thousand dollars off of this now $82,000 project. It's a 90-year-old building. You know, I'm, we'll do it. If the council wants us to, I'll get the staff out there. We'll get it done. I think the getting divorced windows now and then coming back next year when we do the... I think the weatherproofing is something we want to look at in the budget process. I think that would be a better option than having... And it's not just that, I mean, putting a B caulk on is not all that difficult. But I was out there with Tom. He's explaining to me, he was the lead on the, he's the T in T and J restoration. And he was kind of showing me where it's cracked and where some, where you don't want to, where sometimes you do want to dig out the stuff because it's all, it's coming out.
It's loose. It's going to come out.
And so, there are some judgment calls in there. And I, I'd rather have a trained mason doing that on a building. Kind of precious of the city. Did he give you a count on how many were the worst?
We could have him break it out, but he just provided a lump sum fee. And then I broke it down to about $125 of opening. So, there's 49 doors and windows I believe.
If you switched to union billing, you'd just find the material.
Time and material, yeah. So, if it takes them less time to do the windows, you might save a little bit, but...
Would we be assured that it wouldn't exceed the...
Yeah, we would set that, their current number, whatever it is, as they're not to exceed.
Yes, so it's a count.
Yeah.
A letter amount.
So, we could approach it that way and see if we come in below that.
Do we need a motion to do that?
Uh, yeah, yeah, we should. I would suggest we just make a motion to approve the full amount for a change order and then we'll talk and see if we can get it down a little bit.
See if we can.
Tom was a little, it's interesting during the discussion, I really don't want to characterize somebody else's reaction, but he wanted to do the job right and he thought that was the way to do it. And when I was asking him, "Can we do it another way?" He said, "Yeah, do it any way you want if you don't want to pay the money." But, I mean, he feels pretty strongly that this is the way to go. And I, I, you know, I can't know exactly, but my impression is that this is the right way to go.
I would agree that it needs to be done. The caulk is as old as the windows and they're some 25 years old or something like that. And that's past its life expectancy, honestly.
I did not get up in the lift and look at the windows.
I did provide you with some pictures.
Yeah, we did. I appreciate that. That did help.
It is a pretty big gap at the top of the windows, for sure.
Well, they weren't sure if there'd ever been any. Some of them, they thought they hadn't been caulked, which is probably...
I would say it probably come out. I would assume they did it right first.
You would like things to come out there?
Yes, you would.
The lifetime of working on a building was in 97 or 98 or there? I think it was a little before that, was it? 95 maybe?
I think there's no...
Or was it after I moved it down?
No, I remember when, I, we have drawings from when they put the windows in and did some roof repairs. It was mid-'90s, I believe, or somewhere around there.
Yeah. I moved here in '97 and it was already done.
Well, I moved here in '96 and I remember seeing them work on it.
So, we're talking about a total change of $8,145?
I mean, I certainly believe that we need to protect our investment.
Yeah.
Cost is a concern because it is so far out of budget.
Yes.
Really more fuzzy problem for us of whether or not I think we'll do it. I think we're going to have to do so. I kind of think if maybe our city employees could do some with the caulking.
I'm still with that.
On the other hand, if they're uncapable with it.
I mean, I think they get the, I have no question that they can reach the lower windows. It's more a question of, I mean, when do you, when do you dig out the grout? And when do you, you know, when do you fill, when you take a B of caulk over it? We could, I mean, I'm morally comfortable with doing the worse windows this year because based on, not having looked at anything in terms of next year's budget, how much money we... based on, not having looked at anything in terms of next year's budget, how much money we got, we have, I think, uh, doing the weatherproofing next year and maybe the rest of the windows would be a, would be a, another option.
Can, can we get an understanding of what that number is? Window-wise, the worst windows?
Oh, okay, uh, I, uh, yeah.
Yeah, we could have the mason try to break that down better for you guys, so you have an understanding of-
Because otherwise, we're au- we're authorizing the full amount anyway, and then we're authorizing the full amount for all windows anyway, right? Right, so you, you want, when you, so we should, okay, minimum we should do the two thousand for the break?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, but I think we ought to break it down, the windows and caulking, do the worst this year, and then next year when we do the roof.
I agree, so, I mean, do you want us to go ahead and approve the change order for the full amounts anyway? And then what means and methods are, but I mean, wouldn't that show up for the same budget year?
Yeah, it would. Well, yeah, no, I, I'm, I understand what you're saying. The, um, whatever we do, we really kind of need to do that because he would otherwise be gone. Uh, he's, he's probably gonna be here for another, maybe the rest of this week. So, we won't be together as a body again for another three, three weeks. Yeah, I think, go ahead and, we'll see if we can get it down from, from the sixty-one twenty-five, but let's, let's go ahead and, I would say, go ahead and approve the whole amount, and then we'll work on trying to, to do the worst windows. You know, I believe that as a not to exceed amount, for doing time and material on the windows.
I mean, in the alternative, we could borrow the money for, uh, next year's budget, uh, we might refund it and pay it back next year. Go ahead from this budget. Not always what we like to do, but sometimes necessary.
That, yeah, that's, that, I, that would, yeah, I guess we talked, mentioned that, yeah, that's probably as good a way to go as any, is the, I, I just, it, it's just, it, it, it makes it difficult when you've got another twenty thousand dollars worth of spending and you're more than that over, so-
Sure.
I, if we can, if we can kind of put that in next year's budget, as you're talking about there, and that, in that way, I think that would be, that'd make, that'd make me feel a lot better. To broadly, borrow the full eight and then get it out of next year's, whatever, you know, we're gonna have to carry that out next year. If that means we have to wait, we're gonna have to wait at least another year before we start taking care of that stuff over there. It's gonna be, and by another year, I mean eighteen months from today, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve a change order of the amount not to exceed eight thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars to T and J Restoration and Waterproofing.
I have a motion in seconds to accept the change order for T and J Restoration Waterproofing in the amount of eight thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars, not to exceed. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, and then, do we, do we, are the ceiling of the brick and stuff to deal with that in next year's budget?
That's the plan, that's the plan. It depends about how much, they were talking about the full capital budget, but I, I, I assume we'll have enough to be able to do that. Unless, I mean, we put fifty thousand aside for the building this year, we're talking about, about half that next year, when you add the eight thousand plus the nineteen, so, we're talking about twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
It, it's certainly a possibility to, to include that addition, but I kind of decline to leave that. I know it's important to get that brick sealer on there.
Yeah.
At the same token, I don't know that it's important to, that it can't wait six months to go. Or more for next year's budget kind of placing.
The what, you mean the?
The, the sealer on the brick.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, no, and, and that, that went through the process when Lynn was here. And that, I, the way I look at it, that determination's already been made, that we aren't gonna spend that this year. And I'm not really revisiting it new, I'm just sort of reminding us that, that we already know there's, there's parts unknown.
Yeah, alright. Alright. Economic Development Report by the Chamber of Commerce from the area. No, I know, I see it.
We had a meeting, they didn't know what we did.
Why didn't Jenny bring that to us? Isn't she supposed to bring a report back to us?
Well, it's not necessar- I mean, I discussed it with her, uh, at times. Uh, the question is, is we pay, uh, the city, uh, the chamber so much money, uh, do you want some of that money for her to come back here and report? Because that's essentially what you're doing, if you're paying her to come back here and report, one way or another, she gets paid for that. Or you want, uh, to get a written report, uh, on it? You know, it's six and one and half a dozen of another. She used to come and report, she and I discussed it at one point and decided to pair some of that back. We can have her come back in here and report, but what they're, some of the money we're paying, uh, to the chamber is just going to report you back. Would you rather go to report you back, or would you rather go to things that actually do something?
It don't matter, I just asked a question. Do you, is that something Lynn was doing that I?
No, well, at, at one time she was coming in and giving monthly or almost monthly.
Oh, I remember, yeah, is, it was Lynn go, I, I guess I missed, I still haven't got that on my regular calendar, I haven't, yeah. I know he was going to meetings, I have no excuse, I just didn't put it in my calendar. But is that something you'd want me to be doing? Because I understand what you're saying.
Attending the chamber meetings, you mean?
Well, yes, attending, well, not just attending, but reporting back, now, the attending part, I assume, but-
Yes, I mean, and, and I'm on there too, so I can report, I just, I haven't got the minutes from last month, so I don't know what they are.
But, and you do get paid to come here, but it's, uh, what, uh-
Not a whole lot.
Yeah, wow, compared, compared to the, I can't say you don't get anything, because I get a little bit more to come here, so, of the two of us, I think I would have the heavier responsibility to come down. And proportionally, that'd be one word than you and-
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah. Okay, well, if, I'll talk to Jenny, if she isn't going to, I'll try and get you something every now.
Okay. Alright. Public hearings, not scheduled, is that still okay?
Sure.
Public hearings?
No, not scheduled, yeah, alright.
Action and agenda, finance, anything? Commissions and license, nothing? Legal, authorizing the compensation of a certain employee.
We have an ordinance prepared, uh, and I don't know if the chief wants to make some comments on this. We have a, uh, officer who is, uh, being promoted to corporal, and we, as if we don't have anyone in that position. And, um, Officer Cribbs is gonna be promoted, and we need to, and the council, uh, needs to set that salary, and that's the point of the ordinance before here.
Any further discussion?
Let me just say, most of you know within the email that, uh, that's Tim Cribbs there, most of you know him, with his entire family, with his folks, uh, from Overly, and, and, uh, pretty tight family, as you can see, and, uh, I just think that we're, I just think that we're particularly, we're just blessed, I guess is the word, to be able to have the caliber of people we have to be able to promote within the police department. The, uh, much to, I hope to be Corporal Cribbs's discretion, is it's not that big of impact on the budget. Goes from, he's currently in the G-three, and will go to H-three, and in passing of the ordinance, thirteen eighty-nine on, about overtime to fourteen twenty-seven. We've, uh, we've been without a corporal since two thousand thirteen, at the promotion of, uh, who does, as a matter of fact. So, I would ask your consideration, uh, to pass the ordinance this evening. If passed by the council for purposes of paperwork, which as we all know is most important, of the pay would go in effect-
Twenty-second.
Correct. It makes it easier for purposes of paperwork.
Right.
The actual promotion of, where it-
It'll start at the beginning of the next pay period.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, I would ask that, and if there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer, not, I appreciate your support.
Alright. Alderman Lee, if you introduce this one?
Sir, uh, bill number?
Uh, twenty-seven twenty-one.
I move the bill number two-seven-two-one be given its first reading by title only.
Second. I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-seven, twenty-one be given its first reading by title only. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, continue please.
An ordinance to fix the compensation of a certain employee of the City of Centralia, Missouri. I move the bill number two-seven-two-one to be given its second reading by title only.
Sir. I have a motion to second that bill number two-seven-two-one be given its second reading by title only. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, continue please.
An ordinance to fix the compensation of a certain employee in the City of Centralia, Missouri. I move the bill number two-seven-two-one to be adopted by a roll call vote.
Second. I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-seven twenty-one be adopted by a roll call vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Lake?
Yes.
Alderman Borman?
Yes.
Alderman Warpin?
Four.
Alderman Bowrap?
Yes.
Alderman Warren?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yes.
Alright, by your bill, bill number twenty-seven twenty-one passive, now becomes ordinance number-
Two-seven-eight-three.
Alright. Authorizing the removal of a section sidewalk in the seven hundred block of Booth Street without replacement.
Sir?
Yes.
Yes.
If, if you have just a moment, in, in great anticipation of this legislation passing, I, I have a plaque and, uh, a letter that you wrote. And I, I'd like for you, if you would please, sir, to come forward and present the certificate of promotion, please to soon be Corporal Cribbs, if you would please.
Sure. I was wondering if you could do something, does he have to talk when he gets the?
He has, but he won't. He's so tired, just promote that, uh, for sure, why? Put the cut down, give to somebody that doesn't have it.
You know as much work as you guys for the city? You do a lot of work. Well, thank you. Thanks very much, congratulations. Certificate of promotion for Corporal Tim Cribbs. Thanks.
You are free to go, thank you, sir. Upon the financial crisis, I could go with a Ford one frame in the city, so this year-
That's okay, I got one more, I can do that.
Thank you. You can stay, you can go.
Do you want to, do you want to hear about this ordinance?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, Tim, thanks, you go. Alright. Authorizing the removal of a section sidewalk in the seven hundred block of Booth Street without replacement. This is a resolution, requires one reading.
Yes, thank you. Um, in going through our, our, uh, code book, uh, on a related but separate matter, I noted that, uh, it actually says that when we remove a piece of sidewalk and do not replace it, it co- asks the, for a resolution to be adopted by the Board of Alderman. And I think we've done that usually, uh, I don't know, if not, for the record, we've always done that. Is it, is it what, was what we'll say on, anyway, but, uh, no, I, I think that, so that's why we did have a formal resolution here, is just to make sure that we're, we're following the procedure. The builder here, we talked about this already in one of the meetings, builder was, um, had a piece of sidewalk that doesn't connect to a network. Uh, we will someday, um, want, I think, to build a ne- a full network from Jefferson to the park, uh, on Booth Street. And I think that'd be, uh, Lynn wanted, I don't, Lynn told me, but this is one of the ones to do, I totally agree with him.
Right.
So, I, you know, it's, I don't feel, I don't feel excited about removing this piece of sidewalk, but it didn't really, it really wasn't necessary, it wasn't for shape. So, it's been, it has actually been removed, but this is-
On, on the other hand, it would also be very nice if when we rebuilt it, we actually rebuilt it on city property rather than on private property.
Yeah.
We'll have to find a good surveyor.
Chief, huh? Was it chief?
Surveyor.
Chief surveyor.
Chief surveyor, yes.
Not to suggest that you were the surveyor when this was, so, I don't know, and I interpreted that, I guess, this is, yeah, it didn't mean-
Alright, this is a resolution, why is it one where you-
I should make sure that wasn't the implication that you played. Let's be quiet, just be quiet for a while.
Alright, Alderman Ward, would you introduce this one, please?
Yeah, bill number?
Two-seven-two-two.
Can you say it's only needs one read?
Yes.
Okay, a resolution to the City of Centralia, Missouri, authorizing the removal of sidewalk without replacement on the seven hundred block of Booth Street. Move that this, uh, be accepted by a roll call vote.
Second. I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-seven twenty-two be adopted by a roll call vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Warren?
Yes.
Alderman Bowrap?
Yes.
Alderman Warren?
Four.
Alderman Borman?
Uh, yes.
Alderman Lake?
Yes.
Alright, by your vote, bill number twenty-seven twenty-two passive, now become resolution number-
R-dash-fourteen-dash-o-eight.
Alright. Thank you very much. Purchasing, authorizing mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with BHMG Engineers Incorporated for professional services.
Uh, this was discussed during the Public Works and Public Utility meeting, couple, well, thirteen days ago, and, um, they, they have, uh, the contract, they, they have been our engineers on, uh, electrical, uh, the electrical grid for some time. This project, they would, uh, come up with a path, the best pathway north out of the Wilson Street substation to provide the power that's available at the substation to the north part of the city, uh, most likely by boring. And then we had a discussion about, we had a boring discussion after that, how, yeah, how mu- how big they can be and how, and all that kind of stuff, so, yeah. But, uh, so that, the, the budgeted amount was twenty thousand dollars. The resol- the, uh, resolution, I'm sorry, the ordinance calls for adopting a contract at the bid of thirteen thousand dollars. So, we, it did better than the budget in the electric department.
Alright. Alderman Lee, would you introduce this one, please?
Sure. Bill number?
Two-seven twenty-three.
I move the bill number twenty-seven twenty-three be given its first reading by title only.
Second. I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-seven twenty-three be given its first reading by title only, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, continue please.
Builder created an ordinance in time, but the ordinance authorizing directing the mayor and the city clerk of the City of Centralia, Missouri to execute an agreement with BHMG Engineers, Inc., for professional services to design substation exits and railroad crossings. I move that bill number twenty-seven two-three be given its second reading by title only.
Second. I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-seven twenty-three be given its second reading by title only, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Vote, vote.
Builder created an ordinance entitled, and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and the city clerk of the city of Centralia, to execute an agreement with BHMG Engineers, Inc., for professional services to design substation exits and railroad crossings. I move that bill number two seven, two three be adopted by a roll call vote.
Second. I have a motion, second, that bill number twenty seven, twenty three be adopted by a roll call vote. All of the fair of that?
Aye.
Continue, alright, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Boarath?
Yes.
Alderman Ward?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yes.
Alderman Borman?
Yes.
Alderman Wharton?
Four.
Alright, by your vote, bill number twenty seven, twenty three passive, and now becomes ordinance number?
Twenty seven, eighty four.
Alright. Next, purchase of body cameras for the police department. You know, last week, the, everyone might be looking at ways of planning the purchase.
Well, we've got, we, there are no grants. Talked to Lieutenant Byas, and there aren't grants out there for law enforcement. Mokrum does not have a grant program like that, neither does, um, very rural services. We currently have, uh, any small, the tools and, there's, there's no money budgeted for, for cameras, data, leftover data equipment or anything like that. There is tools and small equipment, um, the total budgeted amount for this year, we've got two pieces of paper, there are two, is, no, that's, that's the one. Is ninety, is eighty one hundred dollars. Last year, the total amount spent, uh, in that account was, um, just over eight thou, we spent all the money last year, but we still have fifty six hundred dollars in that account. I imagine that we'll spend a lot of that, but I think we could still get at least two from that, that amount. Uh, we could borrow some money from next year, or we can, or we can look at getting additional funds from the community. There's, the base number of officers, and Larry, you're, you're the, direct me if I'm wrong. A standard, we always have at least two, we have almost always two officers a lot of the time, right? And then, and then we staff up from there, and the highest, I think you were saying last meeting was maybe five, six, uh, uh,
At a, at a.
An acrostic. So, um, you know, I'd be very comfortable with fine tuning now. Larry certainly gets a chance to make a plea, but I, I think that would be okay. Um, I think that anything else, we're gonna have to go look some, we're gonna have to augment the budget. We, you know, and, and yes, we could survive, like I said a week ago, yes, if we bought all four right now, we're not gonna go bankrupt. But, I just, you know, we just spent, uh, we're, we're already over budget in the, in the general fund on this building, so. Unless there, we have sold one car this year, we've got six hundred dollars there. So, they have, they have the, so.
Six hundred dollars.
Well, that's, that's almost a camera, that's almost a camera. Cameras are with, uh, seven ninety-five.
Seven ninety-five.
So, eight hundred dollars, so. You know, the, the, and there's, there's nowhere in the police budget where they've been extravagant, there's a couple. I mean, I think the server was an expense you did, we did not expect. We had to do it, but it was not, as, if I, if I'm reading this right, we didn't budget for that to happen this year.
No.
That was a surprise.
That was a surprise.
And there was an emergency, and it had to be done.
Right. Oh, okay, let's just cut to the chase. I appreciate what this council, in one of my weaker moments, to avoid screaming contact, which I'm quite capable of, enjoy. We have one camera. Get another, I'm going to get another one order right away. And then, for sure, let's budget up, whatever we're gonna do. Get these other two cameras up and running in the next budget year, we'll not have to see September. We're in September now, what is it, Aprils, new budget year?
End of March.
End of March, okay. Between now and then, between now and then, we have one now that we paid for. We're gonna get another. And then, if it looks like towards, let's just say, end of January, first of February, somewhere through there, we're scooping along pretty good. I'm gonna pull the trigger on another. And then, let's, for sure, let's budget some money in the next budget year, or at least a couple of. Got one now, getting another coming, it looks like we're scooping along about where we need to be. Certainly within my purview to do that, you know, within the, underneath the twelve hundred dollar thing. Let's, let's see how we get along there, that shouldn't strain anybody's hamstring. Unless, unless you, any of you have this epiphany, that you just wanna go ahead and pull the trigger on all of it. I tell you, it's important, it's as important as your policy is, we can have.
I don't think anyone would argue.
Don't think anyone would argue.
Alright, I do think that there is the possibility that we could solicit some funds. Maybe we won't be any place, but we have been successful in the past on some of this.
I think we have with respect to like maybe fire trucks.
Yes.
Now, on the other hand of that is, and I, and I believe this, I'll tell you this, middle of the park, Wednesday evening with the flashlight parade, in case it comes up. We're gonna go hit the same holes that folks are gonna be hitting here pretty quick for Christmas thing, you know, that, all that. We're gonna hit those same holes, and these same holes are paying taxes, and they're throwing in. I mean, how, how much do we have to hammer them, and I'm not a crusader.
Right.
But, let's see how we get along with that. I've got one in my pocket now, I'll have another one at the end of the week. Alright, there's sixteen hundred of them, that clearly I can do. Let's wait and see how we get along coming March. And then budget for next year. Does that sound unreasonable to anyone?
And that doesn't preclude us trying to get funds from outside.
No, it wouldn't preclude it, but I'm just not.
We can, we can be doing that at the same time.
Well, and that's what I mean, too, 'cause I do think there's, uh, there's value in doing this, and, uh,
I personally think there is.
Probably sooner rather than later, so if we can actually get some funding.
I think every, I think every single officer that's on duty needs to have one. So even if you had a situation where there's five or six on, I think every single one of them should have it.
Uh, yeah.
Well, I agree. 'Cause you might have one person that, that needs it, and yet you have.
Yeah. Of course, never fails. But, let's see how we get along right now. Unless somebody's got some specific card firm on. You?
Nope.
I'd say get two of them now, and then wait till the next budget year, and then get by the rest of them then. We'll figure out how much money we gotta budget, then we'll go from there.
That's what you're doing.
I mean, 'cause you only got two on duty, you ain't got no big, acrostic ain't coming up or nothing like that, so.
Barbecue contest.
I mean, you ain't got. I mean, that's, you won't have no extras on then, will you, during the barbecue contest?
I just hate to speak publicly about scheduling and how many.
Yeah, yeah.
But, I think you're on something there, but, yeah, I've got one in my pocket, I'll have one next week, or, you know, whenever I get it. And then, we'll see how we get along right in the first year.
Yeah, that's what I say we do.
Now, I, I want this to be noted, how congenial and getting along I am.
Thank you, Jim.
I'm trying to not be my normal charming self, but I'd like the new city administrator at least to be here six months before I fill in the draft.
Well, I, I appreciate that, and, uh, the, the cameras are very pop, are very, have been given a lot more importance in the media recently. And there may be new products now that we can get that we couldn't have got last budget year, so maybe this, maybe not having gotten them last year, maybe we're, we made a excellent choice. It's a, it's a good time to start moving forward on it. Right, Fulton has, they got them when we, when I was on there, and, and, you know, we were, like I said, we were lucky enough to get a grant, so they get a bunch of them. But, uh, it is an important piece of equipment for the safety, safety of the officer, for the city's liability, as we said. It's, uh, it's just that there's, Danny wants a fire truck, too, so we gotta.
Well, he doesn't need that, just ask him.
They dropped the price on eight hundred dollars, and I do about the first year, they'll drop them again.
Well, yeah, maybe they oughta sell one, have another one.
Right.
Alright.
There you go.
Alright. Any old business? Any new business? I would, uh, I would like to take this opportunity to thank Alderman Lake and the friends who did this in Farnaby Outfield for their efforts. And, uh, they've been the reenactor, the, the songing success. We've been helped. I didn't get a chance to go out and be part of the actual event, but I did, uh, take a little short run out there last night. And I talked to a couple of the reenactors and vendors that were picking up and stuff, and they said it was very, very good weekend. Some of them had been out there since last week, they set up, so. What did you think? What's that?
I said I have some burn.
So, thank, thank you to all that were involved in, uh, in making everything better.
I'll make a short report when your ass may arise.
Okay. Any new business for the Alderman?
Uh, not exactly new business, but I have, I did send out.
Where are your past old business?
It is new to this board, I guess, I have, I have sent out a, a request to the listserv, the MCMA, if they have experience with, uh, feral cats, and I've gotten some responses back. I'm not gonna make a full report, but there are some experiences out there, some good, some not so good, of trying to work with feral cat groups. And they're, they're, so I ran into a councilwoman from Malden, who was extremely passionate about the idea, but it was very wasteful. That didn't really give me a full answer, but, also, I did, I'll be going back tomorrow. I hope, I'd like, it'd be great if we could get a couple of people to go next year. I think it is money, it does cost money, we do budget for it. Uh, I think it's very valuable, a lot of concessions in there about economic revitalization downtowns, uh, protecting your, your, um, your cybersecurity, protecting your, your network, all kind, good chance to meet colleagues and ask them questions. Anyway, that was, that was basically the only thing I had to say, is I'll be back there again tomorrow, and, uh, tell you, give you a full report and stuff.
Alright.
Here for me.
Thank you. Mayor, do you really have anything? No?
Yes, Heather asked me to mention that there'd be, the board, uh, to the board, that there'd be a regional M and M meeting on October the twenty second. And, and he gives the Missouri, and if anyone would like to attend, please just email with Heather and let her know. I think two or three have said they want to go, but anyone else interested, please just email Heather and she'll make the arrangements for you.
Who's, uh, who's committed to go, under any?
Dawn, I know it, but.
Yeah.
And, yes, and I thought, yeah, I think those two, if anyone else is interested, by, let us know.
Alright. You know?
Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm seeing if there's, if there's a group going, I was gonna go with, it was just, uh, if there, I wasn't gonna go, it was just me.
Okay.
I wanted to try.
Alright. Very good. Thank you. Alright, as mayor eyes?
Okay, well, uh, we did, we did wrap up the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the reenactor of the Battle of Centralia this weekend, and I looked around the room, and think almost everybody in here had some, uh, input and efforts towards making this thing, uh, a, a big success. I know everybody, uh, that I spoke to, I would say that their, uh, compliments outweighed criticisms probably ten to one, so. I think that, that says you, you've done about as good as you can do. Thanks to you, Mayor, whoever hooked us up with Mrs. Armour for the, the water buffalo, not only did she do that, but she participated in so many things as far as, um, I mean, you couldn't ask for better help, it was unbelievable, just the things that she took on and, and did for us. So, if you can share that with anybody, I think.
I, I'd be great.
Yeah, I think the, uh, letter of the British accent. Yeah, we're, we're certainly gonna send those out. Dawn and Larry with the Juarez Club did the outstanding job of parking, and that is very appreciated. Landon helped on many levels with equipment loaners and, and helped with, uh, construction projects. James did a great job covering it, Dick worked out there with us, and every, I mean, every, it was just great, and, uh, I think, yeah, I think our city represented itself very well to, to the visitors, so. I would certainly welcome any constructive criticism, and so, I don't know, there's obviously nothing on the horizon as to doing this thing again, but I think everybody that was involved certainly, uh, thought it was a worthwhile effort, so.
Let's, let's not wait another hundred and fifty years. Do, do you have a?
I do have one piece of construction, uh, of construction criticism, I think the next time we, we get a tractor that maybe Landon oughta check the bolts on.
You're a victim, Landon.
Hmm, I might be.
Do you have an estimate of how many spectators, how many fans we had?
Based on the number of cars we parked, it's hard to tell, because we issued parking passes on Saturday, they got, that were good for two days, so we figured we had several repeat customers in it. I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go out on a limb and say we had probably four thousand spectators. And we had, had over two hundred reenactors, so.
There was a, there was a lot of people out there. And, and Jim wrote the curse, it didn't rain while we were out there.
That's good.
It was, on Saturday, it was absolutely perfect.
Yeah. Had to swallow through a little, uh, you know, even that ride, so.
Then, then added to the authenticity.
Alright. Alright.
I, I appreciate your comments outside the council meeting a long ago, that of all the people doing, you thought my efforts were far and away.
Superior, superior.
So, I appreciate.
Very good, very good. Alright, any, any more as mayor eyes, yes, sir?
Where are the financial statistics that I could be done?
Well, that would be a good question for Jan, but, uh, they were working on it. We have several, several outstanding bills to come in, so.
I'll want to go ask my questions to them.
Alright. Sir?
Yes.
Tuesday evening, uh, tomorrow evening, the women's thing uptown.
Oh, yes.
Alright.
Women's Network is having a shop hop.
Thank you.
Yeah, shop thing. From five thirty, noon, seven, five thirty, seven thirty-ish.
Sir, I'm sorry, I want to say six, and it's on my freaking front window.
Uh, uh, no, it's.
What is that?
Society Women's Network.
Women's Network, shop uptown, the, the streets will be blocked off if the street department gets there. I'm not beating them up, I'm just saying.
Five thirty.
It's a shop hop from five thirty to eight.
Five thirty to eight, and?
Yeah.
There'll be.
So, Allen Street from Singleton to Railroad will be blocked off.
And then, Wednesday night, the flashlight parade. And then Wednesday night, the flashlight parade. Wednesday night flashlight parade, and then Friday night is of course hometown.
Going against South Shelby.
South Shelby, right, so.
Oh, my bad, I didn't work for them.
Alright.
They didn't necessarily play bad against, but they just...
Alright, any more As Mayor Eyes? Anyone? Anyone? One more?
I'm like motion adjourned.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion to second, we adjourned, all those in favor of that?
Aye.
Vote, any adjourned? Thank you all very much.